Start the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, January eleventh. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty over suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March twenty nine, twenty twenty three revised order extending remote participation by all members. In any meeting of a public body, this meeting of Planning Board will be conducted both in person and by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend. Can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person. Or for those who wish to do so remotely by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F. After notifying the Chair of a Public Body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Public Body. Or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. Listings of the agenda items are those that are reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And finally, per Section two forty one one of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item. That requires a vote at a time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as proponents of an item is permitted to have. We are all here in person?
And we're not in offer.
And we're not in any other towns? Good. Alright, so let's see. We'll do roll call vote just for Kim? So first item on our agenda is the Form A for four fifty-three Stockbridge Road and Pedro. You are recusing yourself from this, Governor?
No.
No, you're not recusing yourself.
I just want, he's clarified for the record.
Yeah.
That for both this item and for any discussion on co-housing.
Yes.
That I had been previously employed by CDC.
Okay.
Do some work for them concerning this project, which is also going to potentially be operated as co-housing. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I've filled out and filed with the Town Clerk a conflict of interest form.
Yeah.
Stating that I'm no longer under their employee, that I can act the.
Disclose, you've done the disclosure, okay. But you don't actually have.
Right, right. Well, that, yeah, I don't have a conflict of interest because I'm no longer employed. Or maybe acting as agent or any.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we've got that on the record. Anybody else have any items on this? Okay, alright, so do we have someone who is explaining the Form A or are we?
You so. You want to introduce yourself and your survey?
Is one of those yours?
Skinful mic there?
Yeah, I'm sure yes.
Yep.
Tim is there?
Tim Guest?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
So I guess if Tim is up there, he can explain it.
Oh, well, yeah, it's just, you know, there's, there was three lots. It's being subdivided into, it's kind of like the deed lines are.
Tim?
Yep.
Could you please just for our record, could you state your full name and, and the application you're representing? This is. Yeah.
Name's Timothy Shypis. I work for Hilltown Land Surveys in Covington.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Yeah, S H U I P I S.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. So should I explain what's, what's happening here?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So David Thorn owned three separate lots. Were dissolving the existing deed lines and just creating two lots. The lot that has the in on it and then a separate lot down south. And you can see parcel, it's labeled parcel B. And it's, you know, those three different lots with the three different booking pages on it.
Hmm, okay.
And it all has, you know, plenty of frontage, plenty of area, both of them do. They're frontage on both roads.
So this is a combination, I guess, to create the new larger parcel.
Yeah, it's kind of simultaneously. Putting all the, all those lots together and then separating them out as just two separate lots.
Gotcha, okay.
As, I mean, it's explained on the plan on note seven, or no, sorry, note six. You know, that's just three, exactly what I just said.
Hmm, okay. And oftentimes. There is a notation as to the current zoning as well as a little schedule. So you, you have note five that says it's a B two.
A.
A transitional business zone.
Right.
And I don't remember offhand what the minimum was.
For dwellings, it's forty-three, five, sixteen, for other permitted use, it's twenty thousand square feet.
Twenty thousand square feet for use other than residential?
Other than residential. The width is one fifty, the many front is fifty for dwellings, forty for other.
Okay.
Parcel these, man. And it has the frontage.
Right.
It's got more than, and it's got the area.
Yeah, parcel B is such an interesting shaped lot. That's totally not Jermaine, but in.
Yeah.
But interesting to me.
Yeah.
Alright, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
So David, are you keep, you're keeping this lot? And you plan to develop it? Possibly?
Possibly.
Okay.
Having a discussion with my daughter.
Okay.
Great, anybody else? Hearing no other persons or emotions in the doors?
No move.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have second?
Second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Any further discussion?
Oh, one, one, one thing.
Yes.
Tim, you should run spell check because separate is spelled, is misspelled twice.
That's probably didn't get caught by spell check because I did run spell check. Wait, it was separate.
Separate has a rat in it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see that. Yep. I will check my spell check.
Anyway, okay.
I haven't heard that one. That's pretty good.
You'll never forget. You're welcome.
I would spell it like this.
We have a motion in a second and any further discussion about spelling or any other things?
Put on tomorrow.
Um, I, I believe I did get. All in favor, I, any opposed? Uh, can you add us? Uh, do we have, may I start? Yeah, how many people have this thing?
I just need to, however many are there. That's what I started to say.
Where is this base?
It smells like something's burning, doesn't it?
Somebody's here.
Smells like, like a pizza in a toaster. It's somebody's dinner, somebody brought us dinner tonight. Um, alright, we're all good with some money there.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you too.
Thank you all.
Good luck with your sale.
Do I get a copy of that?
Who's gonna file the mile?
Oh, just, oh, okay, if it's not signed, that's fine. I have copies.
Okay.
I did, I just filed it downstairs.
Did it have over a band on it when it came in?
Yes.
Are you checking the mile margin?
Yeah.
Don't forget to record it.
I'm gonna do that. I'll be out after forty years.
Alright, and next item on our agenda are the minutes of December fourteenth. Do we have a motion to approve amended? Do we have a second? Thank you, Malcolm. Thank you, Jonathan. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, I, any opposed? Third item on our agenda is housing opportunity discussion. This is an ongoing agenda item, sort of evolving from time to time. First item is discussion for allowing co-housing. And I apologize, I think, Chris, you sent us some draft language and I don't have it in front of me. Is that something that you can share on screen?
I can. My computer decided to. Uh, install some of it, so we'll just.
Let's see. Well, so why don't, why don't we move past that then? And we can have a discussion on the multi-unit residential development. Pedro sent us some proposed language. Pedro, do you want, do you want to introduce this and then we can? We can, when Chris is ready.
I'm thirty percent of that.
Okay. You know how we are when we get into these discussions. I'm sure we'll discuss for long enough time.
Well, as we just discussed last time, I was looking to put together some language. I apologize for doing it or forgetting it to you at the last minute. This is just some draft language that we can review about the intentions. That we've been discussing for certain parts of town. It's based on a previous proposal I did a couple of years ago, but I just kind of. Slid it down a little bit. And then at the end of it, I, I had some leftover incentive bonuses for affordable housing. So I was talking about affordable housing and I was, I just put it in there just so that we can discuss if there's any interest. I don't really know. If it's necessary, but if there's some interest.
Not, not at the time because Chris got to put it up. So, so we, we will share, but just in terms of like general intent. I had understood from our last discussion that our intent was not so much mixed use, but more. Housing specifically, like multi-unit housing. Is that, is that? Is mixed use, mixed uses, I remember was from the discussion from a couple of years ago, so.
It's. Multi-family and.
Well, that's what's proposed here, but I thought our subsequent evolved discussion was just focused on multi-unit housing.
But this is an overlay. Yeah, there wasn't an overlay. So this expands it to South Main Street.
Maybe it'd be helpful to step back and somebody introduce what this, the purpose of this is and where it might apply. What's, what's the initial concept?
Well, the initial idea that I brought before the Planning Board was to allow for by right development of. Multi-family housing in certain parts of town, particularly along Route seven. And so as, as is outlined in his proposal. We would propose to allow that type of development from Brookside Road. To Maple Avenue and then skip downtown. And then from around where Belcher Square is to where Thornwood is. Anywhere along that route. And lots that are immediately adjacent to Route seven. So the idea is that, that, you know, those lots are, in some cases, they're, they're big enough. They're all within walking distance of some. Some form of social cultural amenity. And they are also serviced by town infrastructure. So I, I mean, the mixed use portion is just something to consider. I mean, I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't want to consider it, given that it's a major. Commercial corridor and mixed use will obviously have a housing component as part of it. So I thought, why not?
Okay, I, I guess I, I want to clarify. So at the last meeting, what we discussed was. Some form of relief. Through a zoning mechanism to allow for multi-unit housing whereby the process would be. Condensed or slimmed down to like the minimum we felt comfortable with. So as to remove impediments of time and soft costs and thereby hopefully incentivize. Multi-unit housing development, right?
True.
I think that's different, right, than what's, what's proposed in the text that's been provided to us. So I just want to make sure I'm coming at this from the right understanding.
I mean, that's the, that's the general goal and the means to get there is, would be to allow this type of development by right.
I, I, I say this because I am more supportive of finding a way to. Incentivize multi-unit housing and not as, not as excited about. Giving any kind of like by right pass to a lot of commercial and mixed use, only because I think there are potentially. More impacts to be evaluated. And I'm hesitant to like, I think we have to figure out like what a process would look like.
What?
That would strike the right balance between building and. Oakland lands.
I mean, I've heard, I, I think mixed use. Builds community better than just multi-family housing. And, uh, you know, I think it's a perfect, it's a perfect place for it.
I think too, we should consider that about around a quarter of the area that's being proposed already allows the use by right.
The foot, you're talking about the footnote that's in our use table.
The MXD.
If, if it includes a.
The MXD allows a by right.
The MXD. And, and we actually have gotten a lot of feedback from the community about the mixed use component, right? So Mandel being the example.
But that was seen as using mixed uses and run around them to get to the multi-family and this would. Would preclude that because you wouldn't need it.
You know, all, all of our, all of our discussions to this point have been about. Allowing residential development by right, not commercial development by right. I'm, I'm really reluctant. I mean, it, it's taken me a long time to be convinced that, you know, that we have a housing issue that. To be solved by allowing things by right, housing by right. And maybe I'm coming around to your arguments, but. This is commercial development. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not fair with it. If, if we do have the MXD. Well, we've been bitten by it once. It's probably not a, probably not a decent thing to do, so. That, that's where I'm coming from. So it's going to take convincing to get me around, but I'm only one vote, so.
Are we voting on this tonight or are we just discussing it?
This is discussion, yeah. This is discussion. I just wanted to like, get us all on the same page in terms of like, what's the purpose and objective? Because it, it has, I thought it was just residential. I did not think it was also commercial. And I hear what you're saying, Jonathan. It's just. I don't know that I'm comfortable with giving. I don't know. I, I haven't had enough time to really think about it completely. So my initial reaction is like, let's take a pause here. I think Malcolm, to your point, we had had some discussions about there not being any. Site planner special permit requirement. And I think we probably need to look at the table of uses and see how this really changes anything materially. But the text has site plan review still required.
Well, mixed uses is allowed by right in, in zones where commercials are where it looks like. In business zones. Yeah, and the MXD.
Um, Pedro, do you want to just like keep stepping through the sections? Cause I mean, what?
I, I think I just want to, before we even get off of Malcolm's point, mixed use is not allowed by right in the B two zone. Um, right, unless it has that affordable housing component.
Right, B, we have the B, the HVC, the B two X, B three MXD.
So that's, that's specifically what this draft would address plus.
But a bowling alley is okay by right?
So. In, in a residential zone?
Yeah, in the B two zone.
Good question. Is it? Twenty thousand square feet of retail.
I'm, I'm just sitting here being not an architect or being a newbie to the planning board. I'm, I would sure love to see any effort at visualizing this. We're talking about infill. We're talking about the extensions of the town. I would, and we're talking about now what kind of mixed use are we talking about? I can think of beautiful areas. Around the world where there's beautiful mixed use and it would be great if we had it. But I'm, I would just, I'd like to see some, I don't know if you can ever do this, but somebody would like to put it on. It's just like. Show us what it would look like with infill.
Are you able to display those zoning maps of the town on screen?
The zoning map?
Yeah.
You everything's looking?
Yeah, just so we understand where this is being proposed.
But I'm, I'm going back just to visualization. I don't, I don't know how that, I know it's a lot of work.
Like renderings of what, yeah, I don't think we're anywhere near that at all right now.
Hoping some architect floating around would take it on themselves to maybe play with it and give us a.
That's a big ask. That's a really big ask.
I know.
Yeah. I think to start with the zoning map and to see what parcels are even available to be developed. You know, I mean, if we're, we're looking at Route seven from Brookside Road to Maple Ave, so that's the stretch of Route seven.
Be allowed to redevelopment.
From Windrush Commons up to this, to the roundabout.
Just look at vacant lots because I think there'll be, if this were to pass, I should.
That's, that's the whole, that's the whole point.
That's the whole point.
Develop of what's already been developed in lots that are underproducing, underdeveloped.
Doing that?
Nobody right now because it's really hard to do.
This zoned as, like, to your point, much of this is already zoned for, for mixed use. Nobody's done anything with it.
Oh, I have, it's my opinion that part of the problem why that hasn't happened is because of the process, which is what I'm trying to address with the proposal.
So which is why, you know, when I talked to you before, I said, well, if it's process and we're really focused on residential. Why don't we look at expanding the use of the footnote two under residential uses where we currently. Say that a special permit is required, but if there is affordable component. Um, let's see, it says footnote two of our table of uses says in any development containing nine or more residential units. If at least ten percent of those units are dedicated as affordable to households earning not more than one hundred percent of the area median income. That development shall be permitted by right. So, and it goes on, but that's just a bit. Um, so, you know, can you achieve the same thing with a focus on housing by just expanding footnote two?
What does expanding footnote two mean?
Meaning.
Extending it to other districts because right now it's only.
Two is specifically addressing affordable.
Or you're expanding it beyond the.
It's, it's nine units or more, but it's only being applied in the B two.
But it's, again, it's only for affordable housing. It's not.
Percent affordable, not all affordable.
Right, so if you do that percentage in affordable housing, then you can do it by right.
In only in the B two, and I'm saying why not?
Different than the proposal that I'm, that I'm proposing, which is any kind of housing. Affordable, not affordable, market rate, whatever it is.
I feel like we're talking past each other right now. I, I, I'm not disagreeing that it could be any type of housing, but have that affordable component. Ten percent affordable. So if you were going to do a thirty unit, three of the units.
It's inclusionary zone basically. It doesn't.
Why did, we got this passed on too. Why did we include this? It seemed like the board liked it then. Why are we about facing?
We're not about facing. It's, it was something that, you know, came out of our discussions and was, in my opinion, better than do nothing. So I pushed it through. But it's, again, nobody's going to do it because you have to build units that have price restriction. It's very hard to make that stuff.
Or it's the kind of developers who are going to do it.
I, I don't know. I don't know that that's true. I don't know that that's true.
I don't know that what's true.
That, that that small bit of inclusionary requirement is an impediment. I mean, who have we heard that from?
Well. And it's just really hard to do inclusionary zone. You can't even get it done in New York City. So then it's not a real vehicle that works very well. In New York City, I mean, you know, if you're doing units with hundreds of units in them. Developers talk the city down from thirty percent to ten percent all the time because they can't make it work.
I guess I just don't see what we're gaining with this MXO. I don't.
Clarity.
I obviously need to read through it since I got it today. I didn't have a chance to read through.
Process of development. What, what the special permit does across the board is it creates uncertainty for anybody who wants to do anything. Yeah. That's, if that's simple, you can talk to whoever you want. I mean, I've been talking to people across town about this. And it's a problem. And it's not just this town. I mean, I, I've sent you guys at least this week a couple of articles outlining how other towns are recognizing that it's a problem.
This is the, you have to pour so much money into it and then you're doing that with a lot of doubt. You don't know the result.
The risk.
So.
I do hear this, but I mean, we are in Massachusetts and other towns have similar requirements. Are there, are there builders that are building in other towns rather than Great Barrington? Because it's easier, that there's, it's easier to build?
No, nobody's building anywhere. It's a national housing problem.
It's not a Massachusetts, it's not a Great Barrington problem. It's not a Massachusetts problem. But I mean, if we, if, if we, if we eliminate any kind of, of review or commercial development. Um, in, in this, and I'm not saying commercial development at all, but I mean, it's a big racist.
Chris, do you mind putting up?
What does that buy us except, you know, lowering our standards, I think?
I think, you know, two things, two comments to your comment. When you say it's not a Great Barrington issue or Massachusetts issue. It's a country issue. I think that makes it our issue too. I'm not trying, we're not, I don't think we're trying to solve anything.
Why are we trying to solve it? Why are we making a change?
Well, you have to, in order to try to come up with solutions and answers, you have to try different things. And this is an attempt to do that. My other question would be, what actually do we gain? From a special permit process? I don't think we ask ourselves enough about that. Projects that come in, I mean, if you look at the Searle School Hotel, I mean, that's a special permit process. And I don't know that anybody is happy with what came out of that.
And so what, what, what wound up happening in big picture is that a lot of money was spent, a lot of time was spent, a lot of community sort of fracturing was, was caused by the whole thing. And in the end, you know, we get this building that I'm not sure anybody's happy with.
We don't.
I mean, they just get other opinions, I mean, or other examples of special permits, like what do we actually gain?
North, Northside Road.
The only thing that we get.
They granted a special permit on Northside Road without ever discussing the special permit.
The only, the only thing that we lose is the ability to say no to things, and that's the whole, that's the gist of the problem.
Well, what we lose is uh citizens' input into the process, into development in the town.
No, you don't.
Well, you know, I, I. What's, what's, what's the mechanism?
We, we guarantee it in, in our, every meeting.
We, we do guarantee it at every meeting, and we do have the provisions, it's the third one that I read two forty dash one that does provide for, for public response, I think Malcolm's making a point that, that there.
You know, we also have this, Malcolm. This is part of the community process, and when we.
What's that?
This is zoning by law, and this, and everybody should, you know, if you're, if anybody's interested in development, they shouldn't know this. And what the special permit does is throw this out the window.
Because you can go to places where, you know, like, come to, come to the B two and put a proposal before the town for something that otherwise would, would go, I mean, it's a special permit process, so it's saying, okay, you can do the development here, the zoning is outlined, somebody presents a project that meets the zoning, but it can be changed.
So, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna let that Searle School uh thing rest, because I think the specials permit problem, process in Searle Schools was exactly what kept them from tearing that thing down and building up a, a wooden hotel uh with forty or more people, uh, I mean, four, more than forty rooms um, without restoring anything historical. Uh, I think, I think this special permit process for Searle School worked, actually. Uh, there were a lot of things going on in the background, and there are still a lot of things going in the background, because nothing has been done, and that's what people are unhappy about, and nothing's been done. I don't know who's unhappy about what was finally permitted.
Well, respectfully, and, and you should take another look at what, at the last project that came through here, and ask yourself, is this really doing what you're saying, which is preserving the school? They're basically preserving a facade to every.
Yeah, well, that's the best we can do.
What, I think, we're, we're deviating from the.
I just think, listen, in the end, I think that that's, it's a question that's worth asking. Is what do we actually gain, and what do we actually lose from the process?
And what, what I'm still trying to understand is, do we need this and all this text to achieve a goal of trying to incentivize housing in the community? I, I don't, I'm not seeing yet how this improves the process, and is there a simpler way than this with extra design standards and parking requirements, like can we just adjust the table of uses and in the row look at the zones that are impacted?
Well, this was only talking about the properties that are bought, right, and so it wasn't the whole zones.
It was this, he, he, yeah, there was only, the overlay district was just his own Route seven.
So, and there's an intentional element of design in that. In that it is a corridor, and it should be developed at a higher density than everything that's around it.
It's, it's.
In order to achieve a walkability.
Well, this is why I'm suggesting we look at the zoning map, because I don't know if we need this to achieve what you want to achieve. When we look at the parcel map against the zoning, those parcels are already called out as B two parcels, for instance. Right, they're already called out as B two X parcels, like, why do we need to overlay on top of them? Can we just simply look at the table of uses and adjust the row from S B to something else?
I don't think so, because if the.
Why not?
Well, because, for example, the B two is not just a strip up Route seven, it, it encompasses many other lots.
But why not let those lots have the same benefit? They are, they, they have the same, they're walkable, they have infrastructure.
I mean, if you wanna propose that, I mean, I, I.
I just.
Well, to me, it doesn't seem as.
Well, you've spent a lot of time thinking about it, so you've been able to rationalize through the whole thing.
So there, there's, I think there's a few different discussions, one between Brandy and Pedro is, if it applies, where should it apply? And one that Malcolm is discussing is if it applies, should it be by right, and he doesn't agree with that, so I think, I think there's two discussions and you are circling both of them.
I'm not striking on any of them.
You're circling.
Of course.
What, what's the negative downside of having it by right?
That's what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's a good question, and um, from my perspective, I don't disagree philosophically with Pedro that by right, we have a very robust code. We've been trying to incorporate design standards in it, we have all, all these other things. My, my concern stems from lack of capacity at the town level to actually see that get implemented consistent with our code. Case in point is the dermatology office, right? If, if I'm a developer and I come in to the billing department and just get my permit, and I gotta rely on the billing official to really sit down and go through the zoning code and make sure everything is being met. I, I feel like that's a really tremendous burden um, on that office.
I think that's a very interesting example that you bring up, because what we're talking about failing at the dermatology office is the process. What, what they failed to adhere to is, is the site plan review. Because the rest of it is built to the zone. The zone, the, the building height, the bulk, everything is built to the zoning. What they didn't get was the review, the process part of it.
Well, they.
Yeah, we talked about the door going in the wrong direction.
Yes.
That's, there's nothing in the code that says that it's, you have to have a code.
I mean, I just think as a community, and I think this is common in small communities, that that the land development process relies on an army of volunteers. Right, because staff is limited, I mean, we, we can't send every application to Chris to have him go through it, and he would do a good job, I mean, he previews a lot, all of our applications as it is now, but it's, I just don't think that that's a realistic ask.
So if somebody were to bring in a project to us, that would be by right. They bring it to us for site plan review, you're not suggesting that we wouldn't catch, I mean, I know John has to most definitely catch any code infringement in that proposal.
And spelling errors.
And spelling errors on top of that.
Lack of honor.
So I, I know you're not suggesting that, I mean, if, if we have site plan review in there, they're gonna come in here, they're gonna have to adhere to.
And Brenda, just, I wanted to point out that uh, he's creating, he's proposing an overlay district. But all the, it's not all of the B two zone. It's only those lots that front on Route seven. There are other parcels in the B two zone that, you know, from, on Reed Street or Brookside or whatever.
And the M X D as well.
And there are portions of the B two zone that are downtown, which Pedro's overlay executes. Right, so, so the overlay Pedro is not the same geographic area as the B two.
Right.
So that's one clarity issue. That's the geographic layer.
Randy, when you started talking about this, there's some emphasis on affordable housing and housing as opposed to commercial development, and there was some concern that we wouldn't, with this expanded overview or overlay, that there might be some issue with being able to have more developers that are dealing with commercial, the social and cultural additives to the deal. And so that this, you have to shift from housing to commercial? Is that happening here?
If, if we look at the suggested language in fifteen point four, uses permitted by right for projects within the proposed overlay would be multifamily residential, including live work and mixed use projects. Including non-residential uses where at least twenty five percent of the street level and the street base um, are for buildings with the following non-residential uses, offices, retail, excluding, or including banks, but excluding stores with drive-through windows.
That language all comes from the B three.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, I think you could just we don't need all of those in there, you could just say uh, as, as allowed un, under the underlying zoning.
And we could also have a percentage of what is commercial, what's residential. So seventy five percent residential, twenty five percent commercial, something like that, so that it's not a commercial project.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's a lot of commercial that's allowed in the B two by right. So.
Twenty thousand square feet.
And you're allowed, and, and, you know, you, and if somebody wants to do something according to the B two, they can opt to do it.
So why are we, what, what are we liberalizing here? It's already by right.
The special permit process for housing.
Right, but why, so mixed use is not allowed by right in the?
So mixed, mixed use is allowed by right in.
M X D.
In, hang on, it's in our table of uses, in the B, in the H V C, in the B two X, in the B three, in the M X D, and in both the I zone. And it's allowed with special permit in the B one, the B two, and the B two A. This is why I need to look at the map, because I don't remember where all those are.
Hmm, B two X is State Road. Do you wanna look, look at the map and ask another time to put the discussion piece?
I know, I know, it's just. I'm going back and forth on my iPad, so if anybody else feels like they need a map.
I'd like to see a map.
The B is downtown. The H V C, I think we know what the H V C is.
What I'd like to do, if you don't mind Pedro, is, is just looking at our zoning map, what we currently have in your proposed overlay, and I understand that you're talking about parcels that front on, on Route seven in the south is M X D and the B two, right?
Yep.
M X, M X D is already mixed use by right.
Mm-hmm.
And the B two is by special permit, so the only game, and this is the exercise I need to do, is in the B two, an alleviation.
Yeah, sorry, you're.
An alleviation of process.
And, and that's huge.
Maybe, can we just work through the exercise real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then north is the B two X, the R one B. Uh, maybe it's not the R one B, because nothing fronts on it.
B two X is not part of the overlay.
Yeah, because it's built to it.
Well, I guess there are some.
Well, there are, it cracks the corner, so what's the intention there?
Again, there's no relief because it's already allowed.
Right, okay, so B two X, B two and B two A. So it would, it would affect the B two and the B two A.
And the B two X would get multifamily relief, because.
So again, I'm just asking, like, do we need to go through this overlay? Is there not a reason we should just change this row A seven to yes?
Because the overlay is strictly for those lots that front Route seven. If we go to the other, you know, in the B, in both the B twos and in the M X D, there are lots that don't, a lot of lots that don't.
I appreciate you humoring me and like exercise though, cause like, let's look at it in the math and see what is it really affecting, like, if there was more mixed use development on Christie Road, is that a problem? I don't really think it is, like.
It could be on Reed Street or Brookside.
Should we stay at the north end of town since we're looking at that right now, and then we can do the same exercise at this city?
That's where mostly.
Ask the question, right?
Most of the parcels are the, from, on, it's seven.
Is it the south end?
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's how.
To your south.
Sorry, you mind driving us to the south part of town? No, I can, I can see it.
So, a lot of, a lot of large-scale development in the south end of town in B two zone will likely either trip the floodplain special permit requirement or the water quality special permit requirement. Unless it's already impervious surface and already built up in some way.
What's the blue dots?
The water.
Water quality.
So if there's already impervious surface on that lot, and you're not going out anymore, you're just going up, it might not trigger that special.
I mean, how much relief is it done?
It's a bigger, because you're not, you're only concerned with, again, recharge of that area, you're not concerned with other things. Now, I understand that it can be challenged because it's still, has a special permit, site plan can also be challenged, but there is some clarity as to what you could actually do. The water quality is something that can be engineered and designed, as you, as you obviously know.
Why, why is Reed Street B two, what's, what's the history on that, Jonathan, do you know?
It's on the map.
I mean, it.
And Brookside as well.
Brookside, yeah. I mean, the fairgrounds is all floodplain, that's not gonna be developed, period, so then you've got.
Well, it's commercially zoned then.
It's not available, I don't care what anybody says.
There could be a lot of footprints on that floodplain.
Not really, um. I don't know, I mean, aside from Reed Street, I don't, I don't really see why we would.
So what's the, I mean, what would be, okay, let's say.
I'm just trying to find a way to simplify this.
But let's say we put a Y uh, on the B two mixtures. What would be the harm down here? Um, okay, Reed Street is, is already part of the B, the business district, the commercial district. Um, so allowing mixed use on Reed Street wouldn't seem to be a hardship, right?
It's all residential, though.
Uh, except for the marijuana.
But that's on Route seven.
Okay. Um. It is residential, um.
It's not, why not rezone it R one A or something, I mean.
R three?
I don't know, I don't know the, like, mm, yeah, we've got a lot of multifamily already there. I don't know, I just, I'm not sure this gets us where we wanna be, it just seems like we should be able to do this on the table of uses.
Why, why did we stop the M X D where we did?
Uh, because, so Silver Street is the south boundary of the M X D. The next parcel is a cemetery.
Yeah.
So mixed use there might upset.
It's already mixed use.
And then, and then it's pretty extensive.
Then the big eye and the.
Which has all been recently invested.
Okay.
And on the east side of the street is the fairgrounds, it's not, there's no real development potential there. And then south of that is um, the senior housing, it's a heart of.
Oh, right.
So mixed use down in there just
Wouldn't have any meaning.
Didn't seem viable at all, but, but mixed use in this area of the N X D was more of a reflection of what has traditionally um, taken place on Southern Florida.
But it's also reflective of what was there.
What was there, yeah. Um. That's, that's why it's mapped in that way.
I mean, Pedro, go to bat for yourself here, like, wha- what do we gain in the B two? I guess B ten, um, B two A, I don't know, I, I mean, I am almost leaning more towards just proposing that, that you put a yes in B two and B two A.
Well, my B two, B two A is only the third one, where, yeah. You mean, you.
Well, I wrote B two A down for the northern extent, because you had it extending up to Old South Bridge Road, I didn't know, to, like, just south of that, not beyond it.
Fair, it's where the idea's gonna form, but it is, but it's there.
We should probably do away with that zone anyway.
I know.
Because there's only, there's only one viable property in it, and that's gonna be a global housing.
Right.
And the rest is all state land and stuff.
Listen, the, the, the purpose has always been just to simplify the process and provide clarity of, of process and clarity to develop. That's the purpose. That's what we gain wherever we do this.
Well, I think the mechanism that Randy's saying is, is provides more clarity than adding another.
I don't disagree. I didn't know that it was possible to take it that far.
Well, we're gonna do it. We should just do it, um.
Yeah, I mean, this was, I, I think it's good we're having this discussion now. I'd like us to kind of get to some sort of consensus because we, we wanna have a joint meeting with the select board at the end of the month to talk about housing issues. And, you know, if we're gonna make this kind of adjustment, I think we need to get their buy-in on it. Um, we wanna be collaborative, I think, in that respect. So, um, is there anything else, like, from a bulk and area requirement that you've looked at that this applies differently than the underlying zone?
I think it's fair to, but what I wrote in this is that the bulk and height would apply for the underlying zone.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's fair. I mean, the B two is very generous, as, as is the M X D. I think it's fair. I'm, I'm happy with it. I'll take a question.
Uh, from, I'm sorry, from the public, uh, sure. Hi, Eileen.
Hi, um, I had a comment earlier, and I meant to put my hand down, but I had, sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Do you still have a comment or have we argued through it?
I have, I have two comments, and they're related to previous comments that were made by you people. One is that I think it's a mistake to assume that any board, including a planning board, will always have intelligent, concerned, and experienced members. I think we probably can all think of boards in this town that have not had members like that. And the second is the comment that I thought one of the bigger or biggest reasons for not having special permits is that an abutter, for instance, could then not go to court to stop a development. And I wondered if a zoning bylaw can have, um, can address that to protect the rights of, of butters.
I believe that Land Court already does. There's no reason why anybody can't put a lawsuit together against anything. They can challenge.
They can challenge site, site plan review.
They can challenge anything.
Can't, I, I thought you could not challenge site plan review.
No, you, you can. You went to court. You can challenge site plan review for sure. There's nothing in the books that says you can't. Let's just put it that way. Um, and anybody, you know, what, what, what a challenge would do is to question the, the zoning. So if the zoning is in place, you could still challenge it, but it would be a hard pull to, to win a decision against what a town is, is outlined as their zoning. So anything is challengeable, is my point. This doesn't preclude you from challenging anything. You can even challenge something that's by right. Nothing precludes you, precludes an, an abutter from challenging anything.
But it would require having an experienced lawyer.
Well, so it would require having an experienced lawyer if you're challenging site plan review or, or, or special permit.
Now, it's a little easier when you're going over well-traveled ground. However.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
I think, um, I think it's a point, um. All right, go ahead. I'm, 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 I'm sitting on a fence here. And, um, I, I think it'd be good to bring this back the next meeting and, and look at this and say, okay, well, how are we gonna, how are we gonna do it? Um.
Can, can there be homework assigned where people go back and think what can be done with the existing law that would reflect what what Pedro is proposing here?
Yeah, one of the things, um, as, as I understand it, a few years ago, I mean, maybe only two years ago, didn't the legislature uh, pass a law that made it more difficult, uh, or at least more costly to, uh, challenge a housing special permit in Land Court? I thought they had to put up bonds now and, uh.
Uh, the court can require a, uh, an appellant to put up a pretty sizable bond to pay for the, for the process fees.
Yeah.
And the attorney's fees. Um, it's not automatic.
Option, no, but I, I thought it was, I thought it was designed to kind of discourage frivolous, uh, lawsuits that are just intended to kill a project without really any chances. And I think they had their, I mean, I think the, the new law requires for housing challenges, if they lose the challenge, they have to pay the, um, the, the fees for them, for the town.
That's right.
So I, I don't know what our experience has been in the last couple of years in terms of special permits or people challenging special permits. I can't think of anything that.
Oh, well, Mandeville.
Mandeville was before this. And Mandeville, by the way, was not a special permit, right? They were challenging the site.
That was one of the.
They, no, they challenged the water quality protection special permit.
Oh, was that special permit right here? So I mean, again, any special permit can be challenged, you know?
And Tom, and Tom Doyle's, uh, project got a site plan review.
Yeah.
Challenge.
Right, that was challenged, the site plan review.
It took him a while to get it, to get the, saw that issue too, and a lot of money.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, housing things are now, um, uh, less likely to get, you know, just frivolous lawsuits, um, but I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what the experience in the, in the state has been since.
I think it depends on your neighbors, right? Um, Chris, would you?
You're right.
Are you able to bring up the table of use regulations, that first page that shows the residential uses? It is, if we were to, to sort of test here, looking at Row three, which is dwelling, multi-unit, and then we've got four to eight and nine or more, um, and then mixed use, which is Row seven. Thank you very much.
Good.
Yes, yes. So if in the, I guess we're looking at the M X D, the B two X and the B two and the B two A, so what do we have now? So right now, in the B two, up to eight units is by right for multifamily. And then it is a special permit for nine or more units and for mixed use.
It's the same for all three districts.
Is it? You're looking at that quickly?
B two, B two X and M X D, yeah.
Although the four to eight units.
But it, it doesn't make any sense that we allow twenty thousand square feet of retail by right, and yet we make mixed use a special permit in that same zone?
Uh, I'm past arguing that point, Jonathan. No, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, like, let's test out what it would mean for it to be a Y.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree with that.
Um, and then if we would, if we were thinking about making nine or more units a Y and four to eight was still a special permit, well, that doesn't really make sense either.
No.
So in the case of the B two A, I mean, do we think about just removing that entirely?
I think Jonathan's suggestion is right with the B two A.
We don't need it. It's no worse.
The east side will never be developed.
The east side is, is, that's not conservationism?
Yeah, it's, it'll never be developed. And then the other side is.
It's Thornwood.
And it would become.
Part of the B two.
B two.
Or.
And, and the other, it should be, um, R, R four, yeah.
Or R two, I mean, there's R two and R one B.
They went back to when the wards owned that property and, and they were trying to develop it or something.
They, they don't know.
We should, we should, well, let's see what we're gonna do about communal, um, living before we, in the zones, before we decide what the B two A should become.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to put the Thornwood in a zone that prohibits it.
I think it's a great idea that to get rid of it.
Okay, all right.
Not often we simplify our zoning.
The process is never simple to get there. Um. Okay. Uh, so, Straw Pull, how do we feel about talking with the select board about a modification to Rows three and seven?
Will they understand?
Well, I think it's incumbent on us to make, make a pitch.
I, 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 I feel more comfortable discussing that at our next meeting, which I believe is before the, um, our joint meeting.
Okay. What information would you like us to gather in the meantime, Malcolm?
Um, I'd, I'd like to be able to continue. I'd like to continue walking through, um, what we've just been walking through and saying, okay, what, what happens in each one of these things? So we don't get ourselves in a situation where we have, um, uh, you know, conflict, you know, obviously conflicting, um, um, notations on zoning districts, so.
Chris, um, recognizing that we're just sort of like coming up with this idea live, is there anything like immediately that gives you pause um, in adjusting Rows three and seven? Um, for the B two and, I guess, M X D we have to look at, right?
And B two F, right?
And B two X.
Yeah.
Um, from S B to Y.
Where's the B two X?
And, and we can ask you again at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
But I'm just wondering if there's anything jumps out at you immediately. It's like, that's, okay.
That's the good stuff in the right direction.
Yeah, I wanna thank you guys for engaging. I know it's a hard pull.
Um, yeah, I think we're getting there.
Okay.
I think several years ago at town meeting, when the board proposed, um, changing the B two, the map of the B two zone on Stockbridge Road and some of the allowed uses, the planning board recommended that mixed use be allowed by right, and it, and it was changed back on town meeting board discussion.
Oh, I don't recall that.
I think it was Fred who did that.
Yeah, I think that was the history there.
From twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
So we can take another pass at the runway down there?
Well, I can say, if it's of interest, I've got buy-in from three select board members. This, this type of goes already, so that pulls a lot of weight.
All right, well, let's, we'll, um, as homework, if everyone could review the table uses and just see if we're creating any inconsistencies. I think that would be helpful. Um, a table amendment doesn't require us to have a lot of checks or anything like that, so.
No, it's better. I mean, I, I guess, like I said, I, my, my proposal was intentionally modest.
And if it's a, um, if it's a housing-related proposal, it may just require a simple majority vote. That was the other thing, it was changed in the same, the, the, yeah, at the same time.
That's right, yeah, that's a good one.
Rather than a two person.
So does the mixed use count as housing? Yeah.
So I, I don't know.
Yeah.
So maybe if.
But you can do.
Decide to, yeah, if we decide to.
Separate.
Push as we do.
Okay, okay, all right. Are we good? Causing no discussion on that item and going back to co-housing?
Thank you.
Can I, before we start, just for your consideration, I, I actually have a book that I've had for a really long time that I pulled off my shelf the other day, and it's a history of collaborative housing. So yet another term. And it describes exactly what we're, what we're discussing. So if co-housing is too, um, generic or popular, maybe collaborative will.
Okay.
Will be better, I don't know. Just a thought.
Chris, are your updates, Chris? We talked long enough for your updates to come through? And so you're able to share.
What would you like to?
The co-housing.
Sure.
The one with Jonathan's corrections or additions or straight to yours?
Uh, it's probably better to go than. One of Jonathan's. I have a question in the first part, the very first purpose. So I shared earlier this week, Monday, Tuesday, uh, pursuant to the discussions that this board has had over the past few sessions, October, November, December, about, uh, co-housing or congregate living, the terms have gone back and forth. And I think at the last meeting in December, the planning board said, let's call it co-housing. And, uh, the board had a draft of language. I, I forget which member prepared it. And, uh, we did receive some comments from some special guests from Construct and Berkshire Housing Development who reviewed it. Um, and the board at the last meeting asked me to go back and condense all of that and put it into some language that you could consider tonight. So that's what I sent you the other night. Um, Jonathan did bounce it back with a few comments, which you see on the screen in red line, just right through or underline. And so hopefully it addresses, it's pretty short, it addresses what co-housing is, requirements, and some ideas of where it could be allowed in, in the different zone districts. Uh, so that's what you have, right?
Cool.
That, okay, so in the purpose section, that last sentence, the co-housing units typically have no more than two persons per unit, makes sense. But then typically comprised of one or two rooms per unit? Let's start with the definition, which is, where's the definition? It's right above, I guess, right above.
Oh, there it is, sorry.
Yeah. When you say typically, it's. Co-housing residential, residential building or buildings which residential units consist of private sleeping quarters but not private cooking facilities. So this is something that be considered for the Thornwood Inn, for example, converting sleeping rooms to actual residential units. Which other facilities, like bathrooms, dining rooms, kitchens, laundry facilities are shared, for instance, in common with other residents. Okay, so when we're talking in which residential units consist of private sleeping quarters. And so then when you go down to the purpose section, it says comprise one or two rooms per unit typically.
Is that even necessary?
Can you clarify that for me? Because that, that to me means that you have a residential unit that typically has two or more rooms. Shouldn't, if it's, if the intention is two or more sleeping quarters, as is outlined in the definitions, then that would make sense, more sense to me. What that, what it kind of says to me is that a residential unit has one or two rooms. I'm reading it like.
Room, as in a space within the bounded walls of a unit. There might be an office, there might be a bedroom.
So.
There might be a bathroom, there might be an office.
Right, but it's, if you have two rooms per unit, is that really co-housing? Or is that just like a studio apartment or an A D?
Well, not if it doesn't have kitchen or bathroom. If it's only a, an office and a, and a bedroom, or the dressing room and a bedroom, or.
Did you guys say, am I, am I missing something? Or it's what I'm saying makes sense?
What you're saying makes sense, but I think you're missing something.
But isn't it, but doesn't typically.
The, the, the common facilities, kitchens and whatnot, are shared. That's the co-housing bit. But within a semi-private area, that's where you sleep, that's where you might work. That look for you?
Yeah.
That's really good. I get that.
So what if it said, and typically comprises at least one room?
Well, it has.
So I think. I think what I'm in trouble with.
But I don't.
Unit, because it says co-housing units typically.
Yeah.
And what we're talking about is really like a resident, is a co-housing residential development typically have. And what we're talking about is really like a resident, is a co-housing residential development typically have.
Oh, so co, so this should be co-housing developments typically have.
Units, oh, I see.
Okay.
Okay, there, that's better.
That make more sense?
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Do you see why?
I, I, okay, yes.
We're, we're, we're caught up with you now.
Okay, so then if we scroll, so purpose, we're all settled there, general, we're okay with general, right?
I got something on number two and requirements.
Okay, so then eight, eleven, three requirements, area, everybody's up there with the minimum area, right? And no.
That was, that was a question for June, she was wondering why that requirement.
Is there, is there any code requirement?
That's exactly what it was, yeah, it's not code requirement, it's, um, what was the board of help? I think it's board of health requirement, that you gotta have that size, she, she actually brought, um, Eileen brought it up to me. Okay. And her guy with, um. What was that guy's name, anyway, she brought it to me.
Okay.
That's what, that's why that's there, yeah.
So then, number two, management?
So, all of co-housing developments, projects shall file management plan with the building inspector. Shouldn't that be, should file a management plan with the site, with the planning board as site plan review?
I, yeah, I was gonna raise that as well, because first of all, I don't know what the building inspector is gonna do with the management plan.
That should be something that we oversee, I think, if we're gonna require it. Cause he's not, to your earlier point, he's not gonna.
You're overseeing it, but I think it has to be approved.
You're right, exactly.
When does it have to be filed? In the stage of the development process and with whom? It could be, be part of site plan review.
Then my, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that it should be, it should come as part of site plan, and it should come be our.
I, I can't imagine, I can't imagine the building inspector is gonna have time to go through a management plan and understand it.
And then my other question here is, the rest of it, is that too strict? Should this be in shall contain or, or can contain or should contain?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, based on what we heard, I think that's what's being done anyway.
Even security, did they say security?
Security procedures.
So we don't have any security procedures, or, you know, everybody's issued a key fob, or, you know, I, I don't think that has to be onerous.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just question.
We have necessary ego slights and locking doors.
Just a question.
But I do think that if we're, um. If we're, if we're gonna remove the, um, requirement to have any manager. Who's.
Which they explained was necessary.
They had, they still have managers, but not residential. But we, we'd remove the whole requirement for manager. We have a management plan, but if their management plan says, well, they have to call us up and we'll respond in four days if they have a moving something, then.
Well, they may, they may have two people on staff to, to take those calls, you know, I don't.
But they have to, I mean, that has to be part of the plan.
I think that has to be reviewed in the plan, and, and maybe at some point there's. A template that we are comfortable with and.
Yeah, see, but at Windflower, you know, Construct manages it cause they own it.
Right.
But let's say that's, that they didn't own it. They would either have to, the owner would have to manage it themselves, or they would have to hire somebody to manage it. Right, so the idea that, that there's a manager in charge there. I guess, you know, when I'm, when I'm getting at is that, like, the, the physical person manager is not as important as the planner of how things get resolved.
That's true, but I mean, what, what if somebody from out of state, South Carolina, buys a, a building up here, converts it into co-housing and says, okay, well, we're gonna manage it from South Carolina.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that's, that's the concern I was having about having the resident manager. Thinking that would, like, ensure there is someone there, but hearing from our, our affordable housing partners that that creates a hardship for them.
I'm not pushing for that.
But, and that, I'm, can we achieve the level of, um, tenant protection that we want to? By just, uh, having the management plan in place?
Well, I think so, but we have to have some standards for management plan.
So like, a contract with the local manager.
What's the response time if somebody has a leaky?
It's like any other public sector, right? Like, you've got contract people that come out of, the parking lot.
If, if it's a reputable landlord, yeah.
Right.
But if it's not a reputable landlord, then, you know, all bets are off, so, um. But I, I think there has to be some standards for a management plan and, and, you know, what minimum level do, do we, uh, require for, uh?
That, I think that's something that can be worked on, like, what does a management plan need to consist of?
Is it more than what, what we're already listing, yeah?
I don't know that it's new, but I think there's openness that Malcolm's concerned about, that, you know.
Could that possibly be something that will be addressed at site plan review?
If we have a standard.
I was thinking if we had like a template or something, or, you know, management plan, including.
Possibility of these happening, you know, in different iterations. You're not gonna have a single management plan, and everyone's gonna be different, and. I think let the applicant decide that, and then they have to put it to the.
Becomes subjective to the board that's reviewing, then, yeah, okay, right, right. Common bathrooms.
You know, I, I have some grammatical issues with this.
I have some functional issues with that.
First of all, the common bathroom shall be single occupant use with provisions for privacy, period. So where do the common bathrooms for multi-occupant use come in?
The next one.
Well, except this sentence before said the common bathrooms have to be single occupant.
How, how about, um?
Four issues.
Yeah, that's a good point, Malcolm.
Well. I'm not sure why the either was striking, striking out there, I mean, they're either single occupant with provisions for privacy. Or common bathrooms for.
Oh, it was user, that was John.
No, John, I'm sorry, this is perfect, this way it's written.
Shall be either single, single occupant use with provisions for privacy or. Multi-occupant use separated by gender. Except for me and my toddler are there, and he's a boy, I wanna be able to take him into the bathroom so I can help him.
I agree, and what if there's someone's trans?
Or, or what if your partner has a disability and they need your assistance for showering, or? What if you're really sick and you need someone to hold your hair?
Yeah, you wanna take it out, I don't care.
This is why I want half bathrooms in units.
So, I mean, simple, what are we, just, are they bi-gendered?
Things occupy.
Yeah, I think it's the gender thing we're questioning, Malcolm.
Yeah.
That's why the single occupant bathrooms are. Cause you can take out a toddler in there, you can take anyone you want in there.
What?
No, you can, it's single occupant. But, uh.
As long as the, uh. Our chief says that more than one person.
Let's, can we think about the bathrooms a little bit more?
Now or later?
I mean, the, the trend I see with architects we're working with on all sorts of, is, is, um. Bath, multiple bathrooms, where each bathroom is a self-contained unit, where all your various functions can occur. But maybe with like a water closet, right? So like, if there were two people, you know, um, partners in that space. One could use the water closet and one could take a shower or whatever, so, but they're more like. An individual, like residential bathroom, right?
I had, I had suspicion that the building company would require that in the future.
Uh, okay. I think even dormitories are kind of.
Cause it makes the gender thing really easy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, I think that's, well, it's, it's not what you see at schools universally, but some. The gender neutral bathrooms are single.
Well, I mean, is it? Is it too restrictive to say that, uh, multi, uh, occupant use still has to provide privacy?
I don't wanna walk in on a bunch of urinals against the wall.
Right.
Get over it.
What are they keeping down in?
I think, I think this one needs a little bit, let's get, let's get past it.
But can, can we, can we agree though, that it, it might be better to lean towards separate, sort of?
Yeah.
They could all be in one room, but they each have to have privacy, whether it's a shower or. Or whatever it is.
So, um, and, and the last sentence in here.
Oh, you can't have a gang shower?
There's a, there's a, that's a thing of the fifties, man, the nineteen fifties.
So, um, the, the last sentence, um. The ratio of one for every seven units, I think it should say at least. Uh, one for every seven units.
I don't know how to, like. What, where did we get that number? Cause I don't.
I don't know, but we can't specify one for every seven units, cause that's so specific, that means if they have.
Yeah. Yeah, at least.
I just wonder if this is gonna run into the building code.
Yeah, no, I, that's, uh. I, what do you think?
I'll check that, I've never seen a requirement for.
Could you look, kinder at dormitories and see what's used, and maybe we just use that, um. That language?
That, that doesn't seem low during the.
It does.
You need a whole lot more toilets than.
Especially in the morning and the evening.
You better, you better have a bunch of half baths, then.
For a lot of urinals.
And I, I kinda think it, it, there needs to be like a provision, like, where common bathrooms are provided. Because I, if a, a repurposed building already has an unsweet, I don't wanna make it seem like that has to be pulled out.
Yeah, you know, that, that goes to my, the point that I made at the very end. Is that thing right now kind of reads for new construction, that we don't really address existing elements too much in this.
I mean, so maybe it's bathrooms, and then we say, like.
Well, is anything in here? Uh, that's proposed, uh. Would that adversely impact either Windflower or the Thornwood?
They all have bathrooms within.
They're all unsweet baths?
Yeah, so, no.
Except there's, I think Thornwood, the, the, doesn't that have one single occupancy? Like, there's a hallway in between a unit and about? I thought there was.
That's one. Or was there might, there might be, I'm not, I don't remember, in my experience of looking at the building after work.
But it's, but this.
But there might be one in the future, because I do believe their intention is to add two more units to the project, so there might be.
But let's, we'll skip over bathroom, and we'll sort of table that one until the next meeting. And then move down to common cooking and kitchen facilities, complete common cooking facilities.
But you know what, there is a suite, you're right, there is a suite there, with two rooms that share. Anyway, sorry.
Complete common cooking facilities must be provided. If any unit within the project does not have a kitchen. Okay. We're not expecting any unit to have a kitchen, right?
Does that kitchen then have to? Uh. Comply with the. With the health code for a commercial kitchen?
No.
You sure?
Yeah. It's not commercial, commercial kitchen is for selling stuff, for restaurants.
But, but the kitchens that are there in both those facilities do qualify.
Because they're called restaurants.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting, I don't think they would have to, though.
Okay.
But if they're already there, then. But in the future, I don't think you would need to have. There's no reason, it's not, you're not serving to the general public, you're serving to the residents, good question.
May, maybe someone should reach out to the board of health and ask them.
I don't think it could. I, I gotta contact her, though.
Okay, and then parking. Offspring parking for this should be provided at a rate of at least one space per three co-housing units. Parking should be provided at a rate of at least one space with two employees.
Let's see, John, this is off, but.
Is that additive? Or can we assume that that can be shared, because residents are probably gone when employees are there?
It's written as that.
It is, yeah. One per three, is, are we comfortable with that? I know, you're my parking, but I just wanted to get you.
I mean, we live in Great Barrington, Massachusetts, not New York, and we don't have any public transportation.
So what are, and what are?
That's not true.
Well, we have some ride sharing now, it's getting better, yeah.
I saw a lady get off the bus yesterday at nine o'clock at night.
Yeah.
What are employees? Like, what constitutes an employee?
So we were talking about maintenance plan management, um.
No, I know, but, so like, if you're contracting out.
If they have a cleaning service.
Yeah, so is a cleaning service an employee when it's, like, you're contracting it out?
Sure.
And so, what if you have, like, a crew come in to clean it, because it's more efficient? I know, but it's by. Per two employees, so what if you show up with five people?
What, what if we just said, um. Maintenance and employee parking, one maintenance and employee parking space shall be provided, just have a space, just like they did.
I guess.
Seems reasonable.
Despite the scale of the thing?
Yeah, I mean, we're not requiring a.
It's fine with me, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I mean, to the point of, you know, a plumber and his crew, or, you know, the, the three guys are gonna come in their van.
If it's, not only that, there's likely gonna be parking available for their short-term stay.
If it's large, right, you're gonna have more people gone during the day, excited, more spaces available for.
Everyone's gonna be gone during the day, cause this is.
So, can we get back to the one?
Yeah, one space per three co-housing units.
I mean, we consider this, if we consider that both June and Eileen thought it was fair.
They were good with parking.
Yeah.
That sounds like.
Yeah, but they have plenty of park. They have plenty of parking up in, um, um.
The Windflower?
Yeah, Windflower, and they have plenty of parking at Thorn, Thornwood, but, I mean, and. Having this in Pittsfield is a different, uh, place than it is in Great Barrington, so, I mean, I. I love, I mean, I, you know, we're talking about people who. Uh, still, you know, have to commute to work, have to go to grocery stores, have to, uh, uh, do everything else and everybody else, every other, every other resident.
Thornwood, it's an easy walk to the Price Chopper.
Sure.
No problem.
Yeah.
If you can cross route.
Um, so.
So get the state to build that.
Well, okay, the one for one would be, I think, a little much, Malcolm?
I, I, I don't think it is much, I mean, one for one. I mean, I wouldn't argue for more than that, but, uh, I.
One per unit, one per resident?
Per unit. Alright, so let's go there and we can come back to it. And I don't think we need any employee, uh, any employee parking. Cause there's no employees, this is housing.
Yeah, I.
This isn't a commercial property.
I think that's probably fair, too, I think they could strike that employee.
Well, we'll modify that for service contracts, employees.
I don't think we need to, uh, I don't think we need to report any parking to non-residents.
They always park in the driveway.
Okay, so then, moving down to bicycle parking, um, contracts are provided, less than one parking.
Jeremy.
Yeah.
I think you already got one vehicle parking.
I think it, but again, to, to June and, uh.
And Eileen's point, the bicycle was, was a smart thing to do, or. Yeah. This is pain-free, bicycle parking.
Let, let's leave the bicycle parking.
Well.
Store and lock, we have to get rid of that, though, right?
Yeah. Store is, sounds like inside.
One reasonably accessible space.
Lock doesn't seem. It's, who knows what lock needs.
Um. I mean, I'm not the cyclist, Jeremy, so like, should that be, like. A sh, like a. Covered kiosk or something to pick, where, where the bike rack is located, cause what we were trying to not do was create.
Inside.
A, a space.
They were, they were really against that.
I mean, if I had a eight thousand dollar bike. I mean, if I had a eight thousand dollar bike instead of a car, I'd probably bring it each time.
I think every, no, I think all those people bring it into.
Bring it into their room.
But the problem is, is heavy e-bikes. Right? I mean, I think you can park those.
Cause I, I have, I do have a friend that has an e-bike instead of a car.
Yeah, I mean, those things, I don't know how easy they get when they get heavy to. When you have a, when you have a ten thousand dollar bike that weighs, you know, ten pounds, I mean, that thing.
Yeah.
It's movable, but when you have, you know.
So, but what's the right, is it just a covered space to store the bike? We didn't wanna create like a storage unit. I think that's what we were trying to.
I just don't know if that's, how, I mean, it's nice, but does that become really problematic, right? To then have to create that?
How about bicycle parking is recommended?
Listen, I, I don't think that building, you know, uh, you know, bike for, you know, car for, but a bike for is onus.
Okay, then do it, because it's.
Yeah, you don't want it in the unit, because there's not enough room in the way. And then outside, it's gonna look really yucky and cluttered and.
I mean, I'm with Pedro, like a little hospital.
Carport.
Bikeport.
Yeah.
With a, with a, um, a rack that you can.
Right.
Secure your bicycle.
Yeah, but I think that should be optional. You know, if, if first of all, if people don't have bikes.
Yeah, the thing about bikes is that if, if you make it optional, nobody will do it.
I, I think bicycles should be required, but I don't think one per unit. I, I don't, I don't think we should have a number. I think we should say that accommodation should be made for bicycles.
Well, what this thing is, is if you don't provide enough parking, you need to provide parking for bikes.
We're saying one.
Parking for bikes is not an issue, cause you can put a bike anywhere.
Yeah, but you.
You can't lock it.
You can't lock it and you do want protect it from the elements, cause bikes.
See, that is, could be your sole transportation.
And, and they go, you know, they need a lot of maintenance if you keep them outside. They're practically impossible to maintain, actually, if you keep them outside. I think just having a cover is enough and, you know, just gotta, that's a, very little jar. Quick loop or whatever.
But if you leave your car out, then the mice get, get in it.
Not if you don't need it.
Alright, so, um, not, uh, I don't know. But anyway, so bicycle parking, so provide, accessible space to store and lock bicycles and leave it open ended?
Sure.
Should we make it a percentage of the number of units? I mean, there has to be a number on it, isn't it?
Yeah, otherwise you're not gonna have.
Twenty-five percent of the units? I'm just throwing out a number that's totally arbitrary.
Right, and, and, and put the word in a minimum.
Provide at least twenty-five percent. Of, provide bicycle.
One bicycle space for.
It's equivalent to twenty-five percent of the total units.
Yeah, do you want us to write that down?
And, oh, alright. Can we add the word covered bike parking? Cause it could be anything. It could be, you know, temporary tent that can be taken down in the winter. Yeah, it could mean.
Well, if you take the tent down in the winter, what do you do with the bikes?
Well, they put them in the.
Die.
Listen, I, I, I lived in New York while I was in grad school, two hundred and eighty square feet and I had two bikes in it.
You were lucky.
Laundry facility.
You must, you must earn more money.
Projects with six or more units must have a minimum of two washers and two jars provided in separate, in a separate room in the development. Was that?
Laundry is weird for me.
I think laundry is enormously important.
Because, I mean, you know, they, they thought this was funny, but I, you know, if you have ten units.
It seems low.
That's, uh, yeah.
I thought the comment.
This is a minimum.
Yeah.
It's weird.
But I, I think this is, we're establishing minimum standards.
Yeah. Now, we, we do have, we have one laundromat, or do we have two laundromats?
One.
One.
We only have one laundromat in town.
Yeah.
Laundry is, laundry is a problem.
This is a, uh, this is another one in the last sentence. We have to put a minimum of one dryer, uh, one washer, one dryer for every ten units.
Is that enough? I don't think that's enough.
That's, I'm telling you, it's weird. I know it's may, it seems a onerous and it's not my style to do that, but man. That doesn't seem like it's enough.
Again, does the dormitories have any requirement for laundry facilities?
I'll look. I remember the dorm I stayed in, because there was probably a hundred and fifty people and there was like thirty machines.
Yeah.
It was like a sheet, the whole basement was like.
Yeah.
But thirty machines is, is like one for every.
No, but me too, but there was multiple, but there was multiple laundry.
Sorry, but it is college. Ask me how, ask me how often I did my laundry.
Yeah, well, that's, that's it.
That's my laundry really all.
Alright, common space, project shall have at least ten square feet of common usable open space per unit. No project, however, shall provide less than two hundred square feet.
Each.
Each.
The common space too is something that they didn't think was necessary. They liked it. They thought it was a really nice amenity, but they don't provide any for, for their project. I mean, Windflower, I think has some, but.
But they don't have a, they don't have a like a, a common living, well, even common open space.
Yeah, they don't, there's a TV room.
So, I mean, that's what I was driving at, like a, a.
I think it's not, but.
Living room.
But isn't indoor, couldn't that be like, like dining space too? Like it's many of that, right?
Kitchen's not.
But no, the ki, I thought kitchen was excluded.
I just remember them making, making a comment that it's, that it, that kind of stuff could make things more, uh, complicated from management, uh, cultural point of view. And that in the end, too much space could take away from a unit. That was another comment that June made, I think, I, I'm remembering correctly.
Let's leave it.
Two hundred square feet is not a lot.
We, we sub lot.
Ten by ten, yeah.
It's a unit. If you take it by that way, it's.
Yeah, but if, but if it's, but if it's like dining, living, kitchen, everything but bathrooms and, and laundry and hallways?
You sound like a client. Coming to me and saying, I want this all, in like eight hundred feet.
Well, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like a lot of space.
Well, okay, so ten square feet of common usable open space per unit. You got twenty units, you need two hundred square feet, that's a nice patio.
Right.
Exactly, that's, that's not a lot.
Inside space for your next two hundred square feet is the dining.
But you need two hundred square feet, you need to feel like you have three units or four units.
That's, that's the combination of common.
Common and outdoor and indoor.
It must.
No project shall provide.
They need at least two hundred.
Yeah, so two hundred is the minimum, as you say, it's patio, or it's a kitchen.
Right.
And the kitchen's part, the kitchen's included.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I, let's leave it. I think it's fine.
Yeah, it seems low.
Um.
Seems low to me too, but, you know, we're establishing minimum standards.
Yeah, so it doesn't seem that.
It's not all, so that's alright, that's good.
Landscape areas that are less than eight feet wide shall not be included. So what do you think, like foundation plantings? Are not included in common space, so that we've intended.
I think it's just like, it's like outdoor walkways, right?
Yeah.
That's what you're trying to avoid being included in it.
Yeah, that's a good point, good example.
Okay, that's good, yeah. And then, uh, the special permit granting authority may by special permit authorize deviations, okay. Alright, then, where? So R one A, R one B, R two, R three, R four?
I.
And I.
So I question.
Okay.
Whether there's any benefits to these nine units by special permit.
Anyway.
Anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're talking about affordable housing here. And we're trying to remove hurdles for affordable housing and we're putting up a special permit for something that probably doesn't make sense.
No, I think in light of our first hour of conversation, that's a valid point to me.
However, um, if we go to town meeting and say that on the hill, any property by right can be converted to co-housing, is it gonna kill the whole thing?
If someone's got a million dollars to put into a two thousand square foot house?
Yeah, I'm just saying a big house on the hill. I mean, I, well, I'm, I'm talking about being in town meeting.
Yeah, no, there.
Yeah.
It's about, it's a valid question, I mean, there's.
Big houses in every town.
Yeah.
I know, but I'm, I'm just saying residential zone. I'm saying that, you know, there's a concentration of residential people in certain areas in the town and, um, and they're protected over there.
You know, the only places I don't, that I would question is R two and R four, right? Because they're way out there. And this is kind of housing that I would think we would want to kind of concentrate close to things.
Well, Windflower is in the R two or R four.
Yeah, that's the point.
And, and my, my neighbors have, you know, it was a young couple bought, bought the house next door to us and they've got, like six or eight people living there. Essentially it's co-housing, no permits, nothing. Yeah, but it's not a problem. You know, they park their cars in the driveway and end of story.
I'm all for it. I'm just making conversation.
Yeah.
Cause I know Chris wants to stay here till ten.
Now we just need a lot more parking junky.
I'm for it too, but I just don't wanna see it, uh, shot down in town meeting, because we would consider some.
Well, I mean.
Potential opposition.
We, um.
Well, you.
We.
You've yet to put this out of the hearing.
Thank you.
This is just the worst.
What I was gonna say. Yes.
So we should go, we should go with what we want. Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
So as, as vice chair, if I can make the recommendation that we all go home and consider how what's written actually addresses existing buildings?
I think that's, that's fine. We all need.
How does it, uh?
Is there anything else on that page?
If somebody comes forward, as, you know.
That's it, okay.
How are they gonna add two hundred square feet of, of common space?
Because you're right, cause it's likely gonna be.
So is there separate, are there separate considerations for existing buildings that?
Do you get your own common private?
Well.
Extra space to yourself?
Not.
Sharing it with them?
No, it's shared.
It's just an open space and that's how determined by who they're staying then? I'm thinking this outdoor space, two hundred square feet. And you're saying.
They do not have to be outdoors.
Well, both indoor and.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if I live on the third floor, I go to my patio outside somewhere in a little corner. I think that's just trying to.
Anyway, so I, I get, thanks for the question. I understand it now and I think you're right. But, so this is why I think we need to consider whether or not this thing addresses existing buildings, you know, like, does it really make sense? I don't, I haven't with that, you know, I, with guard, just when I was reviewing the other day, constructing that it might not reflect. But is probably gonna be the majority of projects that we'll see of this type of use, which, you know, is gonna be in existing buildings and.
So, so if, if someone were to decide they wanted to build a new co-housing facility, what building from what would they get?
Multifamily, no, no, it's a good question, I guess. It could be, I guess that we, it's not really multi, I guess it is multifamily, cause it'd be R two, R two. But R two is, it would be a residential permit. I mean, I don't know. It would be a residential permit from a multifamily.
Can we ask our building inspector?
Yeah, it's a question. I can look at the code and tell you.
The question is what? If someone, if someone wants to build something from scratch, what element of the building code does this fall under?
I think it's R two. It's an R two use, right? Because it's, it's, um, our two, yeah, it's congregate dormitory living that's permanent. R one is transient.
Uh huh.
So it wouldn't be a hotel use, cause this would be permanent. It's R two, R two would be a residential delivery.
But this is, the primary use of this tends to be transient.
Hmm, not really, I mean.
Well, that they were saying.
Not by design.
That's what, no, but that's what, that's the use that construct is.
Only because they, there, there's no mechanism for them to make it permanent.
But I think what I heard from them was that both, most of their people are transients.
But they're not thirty days or less. It's more like three or four months or.
Well, it could, it could.
Technically, it's not transient.
Yeah.
Seasonal.
That's, I get your point, but technically it's not transient. So in by, in, as I explained, our one is transient specifically, R two is not.
Yeah, I just don't wanna create something here that runs into a conflict with the building code, that you can't get a building permit for.
I think you can, because it's, it's in, again, it's congregate living, it's defined in the building code. It's, but we, you can ask him.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
If I'm in there, I'll ask him.
Okay.
Thanks.
That'd be good.
Happy to.
So reuse, what if you have a property that, like the zero setback, like downtown properties?
It is.
And like, and now you have this outdoor requirement, right? So if you're gonna.
But again, it's not necessarily outdoor, is it?
Yeah, no, but you said both. It says both.
Has to be both?
Well, the way it's written.
Yeah, it's written both, right?
Maybe it's a rooftop terrace.
Yeah, but.
Especially for a granite board.
I know, but then it's a special permit, right? And so, like, do you wanna?
Again, that's, that's one of the things about existing buildings.
And then also, like I was wondering about, also with like the parking requirement in like the downtown corridor as well. Like it seems like it's a lot of parking, you know? So if you're gonna have a lot of people, like especially if you want like local workforce, you know, like do you need parking? Right? If it's like one of those downtown properties necessarily and how much, you know, like the one per unit might be high.
So let's think about that, cause that's the kind of like vetting we all need to be doing on it. I think that's a good point. Alright.
I, I, I think as a whole, I mean, we can, we should consider existing housing what we need to do, but we can't consider every unit. And that's what the special permit crossed at the score. So if there's a unique building somewhere that really, doesn't have any outdoor space, or if there's a unique building that, uh, you know, doesn't have, doesn't need any common bathroom and doesn't have any, so, uh, you know, that, that would be, uh, a, a need for a special permit.
Well, the parking thing can be brought to us.
Yeah.
Without special permit. They can just ask.
Uh, as part of the site plan, the site review.
Exactly, they could ask for parking relief, so, but everything else.
I mean, is there any way that we could grant relief from the requirements without a special permit, just as part of site plan review?
Yeah.
Sure, do you do that?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Unless you're very specific in the bylaw about what the requirement or allowance is. Well, we just had a sentence at the bottom of it. It says any deviation from, from these, uh, regulations can be conceivably from the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, we already.
A waiver of, or something.
But we wanna be as specific as possible, but, uh, uh, so that people don't have to get a special permit.
Right.
But, um, if, if they, if they had a good project and it doesn't meet the, what we outlined here, then we can always come back and forget it.
Provision, we can waive certain provisions, right?
But it.
Chris?
It seems to me that all parking, anyone who wants to deviate from a parking requirement, that should really only be a site plan review, I think. Don't they have to, doesn't, parking deviations have to get a, a special permit in?
In the scenario that Jeremy is talking about, though, I think our underlying zoning or the, what do we have written here downtown?
The B zone.
No, no, the overlay, the, um, village overlay. Right, it, it, um, relieves you from the parking.
ECOD?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, but with the, with doing. It's still.
I think we should stop on this one, or otherwise we're gonna be here all night. We still have, um, but, but. Let's, Chris, if you don't mind sending out the red line and then we can all think of all the potential pitfalls.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can regroup. Um, Chris, I believe you raised this one at the last meeting, the, um, amendment for lighting and possibly modifying the provision to address historic buildings?
Yes, uh, last year, the town added section sixty-four point six lighting. Um, and in those requirements, uh, it does say that the, um, bottom of the light source on a pole light shall be no higher than fifteen feet above grade, but that conflicts, I discovered with what you already have except in seven point nine point five, which has seventeen feet in the frontage, front setback and twenty-five feet elsewhere. So they, they have like three com, complexes in the bottom. So that should be addressed.
Can you repeat the number of the section that is conflicting?[1789.92]
It's point four, point six, item four.
Oh, you have it here. Never.
Yeah, it's called that.
I'll put it on the screen. Six four six item four says fifteen feet.
Or bottom of the light source.
Seven point nine point five, which is probably something that pre-dates all of them.
Yeah, okay.
Uh regarding large scale commercial developments. Has seventeen feet within the front setback and twenty five feet elsewhere. So conflicting requirements. So I think we need to figure out which.
So.
Which you want to apply where.
I would suggest that six point four point six could be modified, except in the case of the provisions in seven point, I'm sorry, nine point five, if I've got that reference right. Because in a large scale commercial, you're going to have more heavy truck traffic. You're gonna have bigger parking lots that are gonna want higher poles so that you have fewer poles lighting the space. So I could see that as an exclusion to the height to the height requirement. That'd be my initial suggestion.
Could we not have somebody come in and give us feedback on this pole height recently? To the to the tune of it being too low and forcing a larger array of lights?
That was my comment at either the last meeting or the meeting before where the town has been um looking at modifications to the town hall campus as and and recently repaid the senior center parking lot where we had thought we could add additional lighting. And to meet this bylaw, fifteen feet require a lot of poles in order to adequately illuminate the parking lots.
So that defeats the purpose a little bit? Right? Because we're trying to get less light.
Short lights to have adequate illumination means you have a lot of poles because those cones of light are very small.
So what did what did you do at the senior center?
Nothing. There are some some building mounted lights were added on the footpaths, but they're still just one big floodline. So what would be reasonable in in the senior center? Seventeen feet? Would that have been, would that have worked or? I I don't know. I didn't didn't run the the numbers in in of just by way of comparison, the pole lights at the co-op parking lot, I think, are twenty feet.
Hmm. What are the streetlights?
I think the streetlights on Railroad Street are fourteen or fifteen.
And on seven?
Twenty, I think they're twenty.
So a highway Cobra style light is probably twenty. Um, a smaller residential street, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen is probably, okay?
A lot of it.
Commercial parking lot, seventeen to twenty five is a fair range. So that's what we already have.
Call the senior center a commercial parking lot? Because like the example I prefer is the Daniel's Art Center parking lot. Uh but that was designed specifically to accommodate the poles in island space. And if you're doing a retrofit at the senior center, that's a little harder, right? Because you're not trying to make the the parking lot bigger. Um but those, I think, are less than fifteen feet and um and quite nice and low impact.
That's due to land.
So I think in terms of of conflict, though, I I um, the source of light is not necessarily the pole height, but you were having trouble finding a a light that got you to fifteen feet.
Bottom of the light source.
Yeah, I mean, that would give you, you could have a pole height and it's seventeen feet.
No.
Yeah, the bottom of the light, the fixture. So like where the light.
Shall be no higher than fifteen feet above.
The fixtures often have like a gooseneck and then a veneer and a pole. The pole may be twenty feet tall, but the light is mounted at fifteen feet, right?
But the issue at the senior center was the bottom of the light.
So you were gonna need ten poles or something.
See that, yeah, the bottom of the, yeah, and and yeah, seven point nine point five is the same way the bottom of the light source. So maybe the maybe this section six doesn't apply to large scale commercial development, Brandy. Maybe that's that's fixed. I can. But let let me work with that. How about we start there?
Okay.
Um, the second thing that uh the other thing I had brought up maybe at the last meeting was I I was struck during the December holiday celebrations, how wonderful downtown looked with the holiday lights and whatnot, and specifically found ice the old St. James Church, now St. James Place looked with uplights. And I thought it was quite attractive, and this is just maybe this is just me, uh thinking that historic buildings maybe could benefit from well-focused uplighting. And that we shouldn't preclude that for historic buildings.
Like in front of our town hall?
I said well-focused.
Well, they're focused on the front steps.
So, you know, we have the.
Like the fire station.
It's been interesting to see the fire station on Castle Street as the scaffolding comes down. Now you can see the rebuilt tower, which is beautiful. Nice to see again.
They really wanted to uplight that.
They they would have preferred to uplight the tower, which is could be a nice feature in historic downtown. So I put that out there for your consideration.
How does that work with dark sky?
Definitely.
That's the that's the point.
It's not. I mean, I think the like we can have a practical discussion, right? Like is uh downtown such a lost cause at this point between the acorn fixtures on Railroad Street and the acorn fixtures on Main Street and the Cobra heads that the DOT put in? I mean, that there's a lot of light.
Yeah.
If we look out the windows right now. Not dark down there. So I I mean, Chris and I talked about this a little bit, like maybe there is a provision we add where, you know, except as recommended by the historic district permission.
Ooh, I wouldn't agree with that.
No.
Well, it's something as where to maintain the historic aesthetic, it's deemed. I have seen that in many other codes that there's a provision for historic.
Um, so what about a cool modern design that all of a sudden you have this pillar and you want uplighting and I mean, I know.
Well, I would.
Well, that's 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 the broadest for historic building, not for modern building. Except for historic building.
I think that knew some language. Did I? I don't think I did send already that.
Maybe I I I think that's a good idea. I think it should be the historic commission and not the historic district commission. And historic commission already uh declares things historic for several.
Do you have a conflict to handle by?
Not for advocating.
Or or were the planning board teams due to historic characters or historical characters?
Yeah, I mean, there's already things like the room limit, uh, the um CPC. There are several things that where the historic commission is asked to weigh in.
In in my opinion, you would have a standard and the building that you're talking about would either be in the local historic district as a designated HGC property or on the national register. If it is, it can avail itself of well-focused uplighting.
Well, if.
If if HGC approves, if it's subject to HGC.
Well, they, yeah, anything in the historic district, which is a limited number of buildings.
Uh, so obviously that'd be HGC.
So so.
If you're in the downtown, you're on the register, you can do uplighting.
Where does that have a voice in this at all? Jack.
Jack.
The design advisory committee, Zinaur, is in Icarus, Jackie. Welcome to the planning.
Man, you had to ask me too. That was very good. Thank you.
I'm just trying to clarify. The design advisory committee has jurisdiction over special permits and certain exterior alterations in the village center.
Yeah.
But what are what about what about houses on the hill that are in the on the historic register?
I'm thinking that this has to happen by district.
So we're in the downtown or in the village center.
Yeah, yeah.
So so Chris, would you?
Can I just?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I would think by district and not have a requirement through your register. I don't think you need a requirement. Well, I mean, if we're dealing with downtown, most of the buildings are, you know, they're historic to me. They're historic.
They're all historic.
So.
Well.
Yeah, but think about think about what the impact would be if every building downtown had uplighting.
Okay, which is my next point. The commercial districts have foot candles specifically in it. We can we can uh require that it contain a certain.
Not aware of any means of modeling uplighting. I'm not aware of.
But the 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 fixture itself, the fixture itself has a foot candle, right?
Hmm, the only concern there is that um with bold technology changing and LEDs, it's mu- that's much harder to get a fine point on. So it it's.
You could find yourself awash in light going up when you're driving through downtown.
I mean.
Well, I mean, I thought I heard the board say a few minutes ago that downtown's not, that reference is not a dark.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we shouldn't strive to be like Las Vegas.
Sky. We're talking about the sky.
And we're trying, we're focusing on the buildings.
So I think there's no question that we want to address the conflict. And it sounds like there's some room for an item six for historic buildings or.
Downtown buildings or.
But I think I think we have to consider who's atonics downtown also.
Just be careful what you're doing.
But don't can't can't they apply for special permit now for uplighting?
Mm hmm.
So what's wrong with that?
Yeah, why don't we just give a special permit?
I know. I I we don't want special permits, but I mean, we don't want to have everybody in town.
I'm with Chris, man. I think the church where I work looks awesome with the light.
That's one church. It's a church. And it was Christmas time.
Yeah, but even.
It has a special meaning.
It has the same lighting. I think it looks fantastic. I think the rest of the churches on Main Street would look fantastic. I think the buildings along Main Street would look great on Railroad Street and I think it would look.
I think it's overlasted that you, if everybody gets their nice uplighting because they love their building. It's going to two five.
Let's all take a walk after um after the meeting.
Right, well, you know, I'll send you something to consider next next meeting. You could.
I've got some language I'll send.
Throw it in the trash or do whatever you want.
You can add time moments too. Put candles and time moments.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Let's overreg.
So um number four, then moving on so we can actually end our meeting this evening, uh master plan review.
Okay, well, I actually have something to say, but now I'm exhausted. And if I am, you all have faith.
Welcome to the planning.
Thank you very much. I'm now speaking in acronyms and okay, it's great. Um, okay, so what I wanted to do is revisit our timeline of this project. Because I haven't gotten anything from anybody in particular, except something from you a long time ago about free the free committees. That was great. Um, but when we were talking about doing this, we're talking about having community meetings that follow the meetings that we're having now with all the different committees and boards, et cetera. Um, so I'd like to say to all of you that we need to start getting from you your reports on the different boards, committees, councils that you've met with. I propose that I give you kind of a draft model for delivering this stuff and the material, um kind of like a narrative and also using our status. I mean, I mean, trying to make it simple for you guys, but um I we need, I'll send this document for you because I was working this out and I'll talk to you, Brandy, and we'll just go through this, but um I'd like to know when we need to get your reports in because I know I'm still working with committees that have not met to deal with some of the stuff that we've asked them to address. So how can I see a show of hands of people who've all reached out, reached out to everybody who's supposed to reach out, who have gotten feedback?
I think every meeting, if you look back through our minutes, every we've had this agenda item on consistently. And so every meeting, we've been doing a verbal report out. So in the record is a report out.
It's not, it's it's, okay.
Just as far as who they've met with, not content.
Well, then if I have to go back, I'm just going to ask people just to send me where their status is on their committees because I don't want to have to go back through all the minutes. And I do that.
We have the spreadsheets that Malcolm put together.
I I've got all of that.
She got it.
So.
So let me just, let me just do.
Shall we go around quickly and just we can go around quickly and just tell you what your status?
Send it to Jackie.
Can let me just know, let me just keep talking and so we can do this. So Brandy, I have you down for the agricultural commission, select board and parks commission.
Yep.
Have you talked, have you heard back from all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Chris, you have the world's longest list of things to do, which is everything, including the town manager and the DPW superintendent. Where are we with your needs?
I I have not, look.
Okay, well, sometimes soon would be, no, whenever you can get to it. You own that list.
Sure. I thought the update was for other boards and curios.
Okay, I'm just using you as one of the players. I'm sorry. Um, the next one is mine is basically planning board and cultural council. We got, we finished a long time ago. I'm now trying to transcribe some of the notes that we have because there's when we've identified areas that we should re, we should address, there's some discussion that followed and I wanted to make sure that I represented discussion. Because you're saying one thing and we're saying other things. And it's I want to be helpful. So when we go back and look at things that we say are still active or you, there's a footnote here and we really should address X or Y. I want to make sure we get that. So that's why I'm saying this was a compliment to do the planning board. We do that all, as you know, we talk over each other. And trying to understand what everybody's saying and you speak in these little codes, it's fun, but I'm learning a lot. But I but it's really great to pull the information out in there and it would be nice to get some anecdotes here. Because I know that when I went to the cultural council, they certainly didn't know they were expected to develop a master plan for public art. And they were thrilled and some thought, oh, my God, we don't have the staff and we don't have the money. So you get these things going and they're going, how come we don't know about this? So I mean, I don't know how many people ran into those situations with the other committees, but this is a good opportunity just to flag just anecdotal statements that are fun to get in, that be useful, that when you've done had these conversations, write it down and I'll send you this stuff. I'm not going to labor this too much right now, but this is what I'm looking for because ultimately one is having community meetings and being able to talk to people about what's going on, what people are actually seriously interested in. Have you have, when you've been meeting with these folks, have they said this is something we haven't done and or wasn't in the master plan and we really need to think about it going forward and we actually think this should be done? Or if they say everything is fine or we've accomplished everything and we're happy with the goals as pre-established in twenty thirteen, just keep going. We're fine. But it would be nice to get the the story behind your conversations. So I'm just looking for more because that's one. Talking points, promotional points. And something if we have a meeting ultimately a town meeting and we do a presentation of of what we've uncovered and um also when we last met with the select board, we were talking about having these community meetings and they were interested in hearing back from these meetings what people want. So this is our chance to get out into the community, highlight what the towns and committees are all are working on. And then solicit from that from the group what their concerns are. I mean, it's all a process, but the more information you can get to me, the better. So I'm just going to, when I'll I'll finish talking, going through what everybody has on their plate. But um I would like to be able to get at least one or two graphs about, you know, if you've gone through all the different points. It's because everybody has a X number of sections or, for example, Brandy, you have like community, that's the big check, big title, but it's also about sustainability. And commerce is economic opportunities. Well, everybody touches some of this stuff throughout and it'd be really interesting to be able to see which town, which committees are actually doing this stuff, which aren't, who's really committed to it. And you can tell by the energy when they talk to you at these meetings, oh, my God, we don't have the money, we don't have the time, we don't have the staff, we can't do that. Or that would be great and we'll direct our energies in that direction. I mean, this is just the, we're stirring this pot. And it's really of the focus stir and I'd like to be able to capture as much as I can. The tree, your tree report, this is it. It's like a model. Um, so anyway. Um, and I'm actually talking to back the design advisory committee a little bit because they're referencing a couple of these things and there's some confusion about what back is doing and what the historical district commission is doing and it's about, there's a lot of confusion around signage. There's some confusion about what DAC is doing and what the historical district commission is doing, and it's about, there's a lot of confusion around signage. So we need to get some of that clarified, since we've got responsibility. Um, Jonathan, have you met with the council on aging yet?
No, they've never responded to anything, and I've had some health issues, so I've missed, they only meet once a month, and I've missed several of those.
Yours is all about health and quality of life. That's, that's your specialty now.
I will continue to try though.
Okay. And Malcolm, you have the historical commission.
Uh, yeah, we haven't met. We're meeting on the 22nd, and I'll have something before.
Yeah, okay, good. And then the historical district commission too?
Uh, we've already met, but I haven't, I mean, there are only four items, so I'm nervous.
That's good. Okay. Great. Um, Pedro, I have you um, for conservation commission and also the tree committee. So how do you do the conservation commission?
Well, conservation, I showed up at their November meeting, they didn't have a December meeting, and they uh, they said that they're gonna meet at the January meeting and come up with some ideas. However, the other day I was in Shep Evans' office, conservation commissioner, and he suggested that I just meet with him directly, and he can. So I'm maybe gonna do that, because he doesn't have a lot.
I mean, that, that.
That the commission will come through with a, a nice report, so I, I was planning on doing that.
It's also that you'll find that the chairs are not necessarily in agreement with the fellow members, and the fellow members are, it's really interesting.
With conservation, I'd like to have commissioners, so you all know what, and he's great, I mean, Shep is great, I like.
He knows more than any of the members.
Yeah, he knows, yeah, and he knows what, what he wants.
Well, that's good.
What he wants to do and what's been done.
And Jeremy, where are you in this process?
I didn't have anything, because I wasn't at that initial meeting.
I know, you're sitting here.
Which is weird. Why doesn't Shep have Chris's list? I mean, why doesn't Jeremy have Chris?
Yeah, this is Jeremy.
Yeah, it's all right.
But I was supposed to.
I'm popular.
Right, Brandy was, if you didn't get anywhere with parks, I would have taken you.
Uh, yeah, parks.
Okay, I'll put your ear down and for parks.
And, well, I've already met with parks.
But she already met with.
Yeah, I've already met with parks.
Well done.
And um, select board took up energy committee and economic development committee, because neither are viable anymore.
Okay.
And we've reviewed those as well.
So what, you know, so it's trying to get a read from each committee about these specific issues that their tasks went doing, which they, some of them didn't realize they were. Um, and it's an interesting look at these committees. Um, so it'd be really great to flag any major issues or concerns that these committees are talking about. Even if it's off point, which is like, I have a cultural council that says, well, we'd love to do this, but we have no money. And we only have four other people, and we don't have the time to do all of this stuff, and who's gonna, anyway, so you go down that road. Um, they also, some will have questions, some will have, like, I'd like to really do this and not that, why am I doing, you know, so there's that. And then, and again, it's the idea of meeting with the community, and if there are priorities that are coming out of these different groups. That they say to you that we're really interested in going forward and doing this, we've actually want to really address climate change, and we didn't do that. That's not in our purview, but we'd like to add it to our purview. We start getting things like that. Then it's information for Chris to deal with, and when we're looking at what we, you know, do we do amendments to the master plan, or do we just know that this is something that we need to be talking about? So, um, and then it'd be interesting to um, see if this was a worthwhile effort for them, because it's somebody reaching out to the committees and saying. What have you done and where are you? And we'd like to, you know, what would you like to see more of? And it's just a feedback operation. And then finally, it just, all of your notes will feed the community conversation. I think. Well, because at least we can then go back to individuals and say, you know, this is what this committee's been working on. But we need your help, or we wouldn't think about that, or they come with something that we have not addressed. And I'm sure it's probably we've thought about what they've thought about, but the chance is to take the pulse this year.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair.
So timelines, when do we think we want to do the community conversation?
I think that it's way out in the future, and.
Way beyond the town meeting.
Yeah.
Beyond town meeting for sure. So we, I think what we run up against is that.
It's cold out there.
No, 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 no.
Well, there's that.
But just that it's taken longer to engage the committees that were assigned tasks. Um, I mean, I only was able to really sit down and have a meeting with the select board on Monday, so, um, and they committed the time, and we went through the whole list, but. I, I think we've sort of roughly outlined before that it would be nice for our annual report that goes to town meeting to include a status on the master plan. It'd be a, a ten-year status review. Um, and so I think if we can, like, focus on that as a, an interim deliverable. Just recognizing that it has taken a little bit longer to get to all the committees. I think that's realistic, and I don't know, timing-wise, Chris, I. When would we produce that report? Would that be a March time? Yeah, so just to give it time to get to the printer and all.
Well, we, so it'd be great to get all the comments in.
Yeah, we wanna have our existing, our committees.
Our serious drafts by this February. So if we'd say February fifteenth or something like that. So just get your notes in, and then we can talk about it, and I'll chew on it, and we can all have another crash course discussion on this thing.
And then I think that we wanna make sure, as funny, my daughter was saying, oh, you're going to select board, and I said, well, we're gonna, you know, did this update, and. She said, how many committees were there? And I, I don't know, there was like a dozen committees. She said, well, how many committees are there now? And if you go and you look at the website, there's like thirty committees here. And so I think we, we will want as a next step to think about how to like have an initial engagement with them, and is that in parallel with the community? Or do we let the committees who sort of maybe have a pulse on some of these issues be the initial conversations?
And then also, there's a, I mean, this isn't in our purview, but some of these committees aren't very functional.
Sure.
And, or they're, they're struggling, or they have same people sitting in the positions forever, and it's um. And it would be great to get some fresh blood in the, you know, involvement. You always need more involvement, but I know some of the committees aren't. They're barely getting meetings.
Um, Great Barrington has a wealth of volunteers that get things done, but as a volunteer, it's on the time that you are able to give to the community and.
And then there's some really, there are millions of hardworking people, but it's, it's. It's good.
And they weren't in the plans, so there's not like an, an implementation that is easy to follow. And so, you know, an update of revision of the master plan may provide future guidance.
I think you'll, it'll, if we write this in a way that it, it shows that what people have been doing, and what they've been working on, and I think it's a good source of it now.
This has been done.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, you know, it's great. Okay, so mid-February, we should try and have all of our reports back.
That would be great.
Email from Jackie.
Yes, and you will get an email, and it'll be kind of like an outline of what happened.
Okay.
It's only, it's only ten thousand words left. With photos, if possible.
Free trial.
Chris, do you have a town planners report?
No.
Do we have any board or subcommittee updates?
I have a question.
Yes, issues or concerns? Go.
Um, the Berkshire money management just went, that building, we had a site plan review when it turned into a boxing building. But we haven't seen it since, have we? And it's gone through a couple renovations.
It was sold.
Yeah, I know, but why didn't we see it? How come it doesn't come to us?
Why?
Change of use?
I think it's like a commercial.
Commercial zone.
Commercial.
Okay, commercials, that doesn't have to, yeah, if it's a commercial.
I, I, I don't, I don't know what permit was pulled, or whether that should have triggered site plan review or not, I'm sorry.
I, I was just curious, because I mean, I mean, when, when it went from, you know, Gans Bedding to a boxing studio. Uh, we had a, a site plan review, and we went through the whole thing and all the parking, and, but now it went from a boxing studio to an office. And we haven't seen it. So I was just curious as to what, who, who's, if it triggers a site plan review, who, who would spot that? Is that the building inspector?
Correct.
Um, that, that was my question.
Jeremy?
I don't think I have anything since, since. No, because I think I, yeah, CPC I've met before last meeting.
Jonathan? No? Peter?
Uh, at the last December meeting, I read this from the tree committee, the tree committee recommended the planning board alter language in the bylaw as it concerns business permitting requirements around trees. Essentially, that trees planted in fulfillment of permitting requirements must be replanted if they decline or die.
Don't.
So they're making a request for us to add that to, to, I guess, the um, Route Seven landscaping section of our bylaw. So can we uh, look at that in the next meeting?
Yeah.
I'll remind everybody.
Because in site plan, we usually say that, though, right? That's included in site plan, but not in the bylaw.
Yeah, we, we put it as a condition.
But nobody does it. It's sad. Jackie?
Nothing, nothing.
Nothing for me either, so then we would move into citizens' speed. Do you have anything? Yeah, Claudia, come on up. What's on your mind? Thank you for being so patient.
I, I turned, no. And you didn't fall asleep either.
Body issue girl, seven eight on Plain Road, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, planning board, citizen's speaker for the record. During the airport twenty twenty special permit application that was unanimously denied on September twenty-third, twenty twenty. Assistant Town Manager and Director of Planning and Community Development, Chris Remble, sent Denise J. Garcia, Director of Aviation Planning, Mass DOT Aeronautics Division, on September twenty-third, twenty twenty, the following. Hi Denise, thank you for your return call slash voicemail this morning. As you probably know, the owner of the Great Barrington Airport, GBR, has applied to the town for a special permit, permitted as a legal aviation field under our zoning bylaw. It's currently a non-conforming use. This is contrary to the consistent claim by the town, the airport, and brought to land for it by the plaintiffs, that the airport is illegally pre-existing, non-conforming, something I disagree with. The town has a few questions for now. Our next meeting date is October fifth, so I would appreciate hearing from you before that if possible. On September twenty eighth, twenty twenty, Denise Garcia DOT sent Chris Remble, CC to Carlo Jeffrey DOT, Garcia Denise DOT, subject. Regarding airport questions, attachments, response to GBR Town Manager questions, nine, twenty-nine, twenty twenty. Morning, Chris. Judge, please find the Aeronautics Division response to the questions submitted to us last Wednesday, September twenty-third. Please note that my responses are based solely upon the limited information provided, which could in entirely give an additional information or change circumstances. Any legal ramifications should be addressed by town council. Question five, can the town regulate the time of day or day of week that planes can take off or land at the airport? Answer, no. The airport has a daytime daylight and visual rules. VFR airport based upon their available navigational aids and airport lighting. Town and the parties involved all knew the airport could not be restricted, restricted in any way and intentionally. No one is using the airport, and I mean no one, none of the patrons, including avid pilots and airport owners, James Jacobs and Kathleen. I'm giving you each a copy, I'm giving you each and the assistant town manager a copy of the letter I sent, the Berkshire ads regarding the eight-town school merger, David Scribner would not grant. And I'm adding my concerns that October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three special town meeting, board approval of the draft merger finalized, will include the flight school permitted in April. Copy of page eighty-one and eighty-two from the Berkshires, from the Berkshire regional transportation plan. And quote, municipalities that close to these airports, coming around full circle, community to the two thousand and eight legally binding contract. Between Berkshire Aviation Enterprise, Great Barrington, Massachusetts Aeronautics Division, and the FAA, a crux in my struggle. A copy of my January eighth, twenty twenty-four select board meeting, citizen's speak time, and I'm giving Kim Shaw a copy of my planning rule, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, citizen's speak time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything more? You're all set?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, any virtual participants have any citizens' speak? Raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn at eight twenty-five. Thanks, everyone.